Okay, y'all ready? Got your mics where you're good to go? We'll go ahead and call our October, the, uh, let's see, seventh meeting to order. Thank y'all for being here, we appreciate it very much. Do I have a motion to go into closed session for the items listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Thank you. Alright. We'll be back, thank you. Y'all talk away, we're okay. Alright? Move around, do whatever you need to do, okay?
Gary might be back, I don't know.
Come on.
I may be.
That, that, that was in your direction. Has he started doing one?
That's funny.
This is what I want you to say right now.
I think that's funny. Yes!
Get ready for dinner.
Test one-two test.
I thought you were going to say this.
I like these people better than you.
...
Okay, everybody get together. Quite a crowd.
Okay, everybody get together. Okay, we'll go ahead and thank you for your patience and we'll go ahead and return to open session. Thank you all for being here. I noticed their sequestering their principals over here went down the side, so I don't know if they're in trouble or not, but that was them that you saw going off several of them there. But thank you all for being here and we appreciate your attendance and wanted to be part of Chatham County Schools. So thank you very much. Mr. Ham, I'll turn it over to you.
I've said these words before and I guess I'm gonna say it again. Each month, it seems like it's harder and harder to put things in words sometimes. And if this tops the cake of what our state has and nation has experienced in this past week, I don't want to see anything to top it. Without question, our hearts and thoughts and prayers are going out to not just western North Carolina, but there's Georgia, there's South Carolina, there's a corner of Virginia, and Florida, and now Florida is back in the bull's eye again. And it's one of those things that my firm belief and then no matter what the situation, somehow, some way, good will come out of it. It's kind of hard at this point in time to see people interviewed on TV and they watch their children go down the river or watch their parents or something. That's, you know, that's not fair. That's not fair. So this weekend I went up to the mountains and we delivered some stuff and until you personally see a house that has been wiped out or moved or you look at the foundation, until you personally sees that, I can sit here and honestly tell you, TV does one thing, but in person does another. And it's gonna be a long recovery and they're gonna need our support for many years to come. Schools are missing in some cases. Teachers, they can't find. So it's a lot for us to fathom and we need to be there to support them. So at this moment in time, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Let's all stand for our pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move. Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor with an aye? Aye. Any opposed? Like sign. Thank you. And do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion, Ms. Turner, that was your second, right? Yep. Got a motion, a second, all in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Jackson, superintendent's announcements, comments, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Tonight I am going to defer my normal presentation and ask that it be made a part of the record and encourage those who can access the agenda to do so with that for the sake of time and being respectful of our time tonight. I do want to recognize a student author who just shared her book with us tonight, one of our students from Perry Harrison Elementary School. B. Bog has written her book and it's available on Amazon and, no, is it on Amazon? Amazon and McIntyre. And we're gonna ask that it gets sold out by the end of this meeting, but we are so very excited. Our students do amazing things, guys. And so here's a book written by B. Bog. Her mom, her mom's here, her mom's proud, but I'm prouder of B. than, and I know that we all. Can we give her a big hand? It's called Plant Pets: Twenty Seven Cool House Plants to Grow and Love. There you go. And I have an autographed copy. Just want you to know, I have an autograph. It says to me and the school board, so I have to share it.
We'll come to your house.
He's reading to us.
So we're gonna move forward and, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to reserve an opportunity to speak later in the meeting.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. The, we'll go now to the Beginning Teacher Award.
For Human Resources, the North Carolina Center for Advancement of Teaching, or NCAT, supports the Beginning Teacher of the Year Award, which honors annually beginning teachers in North Carolina who demonstrate promise as excellent teachers and educational leaders. Nominees must have successfully completed their first year of teaching and most importantly, they've continued employment in the same school system for a second year. District honorees then complete a portfolio and compete for the statewide honor, which includes the opportunity for a cash prize, a global educator trip, and instructional supplies for the entire school. Chatham County Schools is pleased to recognize tonight our NCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year nominee from North Chatham Elementary, Taryn Douglas. Compliments should always be shared. And so here's what Dr. Giles prints what North Chatham shared about Taryn. "From the minute the bell rings each morning, Ms. Douglas is consistently on point. It's been a pleasure watching her grow as an educator over the past year. She puts a great deal of care into designing and implementing high-quality lessons that engage students in the learning goals. She is highly deserving of the honor of being recognized as the Chatham County Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year. And fun fact, Ms. Douglas attended North Chatham as a student." Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm here to present a wonderful honor to the Chatham County Board of Education. ASBO International Certificate of Excellence recognizes districts that have met the program's high standards for financial reporting and transparency. The Certificate of Excellence mission is to promote and recognize excellence in financial reporting. The annual comprehensive financial report informs stakeholders about the financial and economic state of the district, making it an important communications tool to building trust and engaging with the school community. When I started here 13 years ago, this award was one of my goals each year. This award speaks to the hard work and dedication of the Chatham County Schools Finance Department. It is my honor to present the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ended June 30, 23, to the Chatham County Board of Education. This is the 13th consecutive year to receive this honor.
And while Tony is here, just stand there. We'd like to, tonight is Tony's last meeting with us. And so we would like to, if we can formally recognize him and thank him for his years of service with Chatham County Schools. I think he's going across the bridge over there somewhere else, but can we just thank Tony for his service?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Everyone here knows I'm a numbers person. I'm not a wordsmith. I leave that to my peers. So to save my emotions tonight, I pinned a letter to the board and I would like to read that letter just for the record.
Now, before you start, y'all know the board didn't do what, we just have really good employees and that's how we got that. So long as y'all understand that, we're good. Go ahead, Mr. President.
Dear members of the Board of Education, as I prepare to embark on a new chapter, I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to each of you. Your dedication to fostering and enriching educational environment has inspired not only me but countless students and educators. Together, we have navigated challenges, celebrated successes, and forged a path toward a brighter future for our community. Your unwavering commitment to our schools and students is truly commendable and I am honored to have been a part of the Chatham County Schools team. Thank you for your support, your vision, and your passion for education. I will carry the lessons and the lessons learned and the friendships forged with me as I move forward. I also look forward to seeing the incredible progress you will continue to make. Wishing you all the best in your future endeavors. Tony Mistor, Chief Financial Officer.
Excellence and Opportunity.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Superintendent Jackson. I'm Chris Poston, Senior Executive Director for Excellence and Opportunity. And tonight I'm here to recognize our Excellence and Opportunity Champion from Chatham Grove, Ms. Erin Collins. Just gonna share a little bit about Ms. Collins. She was nominated by her principal, Dr. Hart Olivas. Our Excellence and Opportunity Champion aligns with our strategic plan Priority One, curriculum innovation, and Plan Priority Three, faculties and staff. Ms. Collins exemplifies our equity commitment each day. Her nominee wrote, "Ms. Collins works with students, especially from the EC resource perspective, but truly sees all students in the building. She works as a fierce advocate for the whole child. She spends lots of extra time and energy and cares deeply for all students." She spends lots of extra time and energy and cares deeply for all students, even when it's uncomfortable. Ms. Collins is the definition of excellence in opportunity, as she's a true lover of children and a relentless advocate for all students. Congratulations, Ms. Collins, and we appreciate all that you do."
Power of One.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Dr. Amanda Moran. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services and Instructional Support. And this item aligns with our Strategic Plan Priority Three, Faculty and Staff, as well as Priority Five, Communication and Information Sharing. As you know, each month we give out the Power of One Award that recognizes an individual who has a powerful impact on shaping the direction of someone else's life. Each month, we select a recipient to be recognized at this meeting. They've typically already received their award in the school. Nominations can come from community members, parents, students, faculty, staff. And all of these nomination forms are on our website. Mr. White is our art teacher at Seaforth High School. He is unable to be with us this evening. He has a commitment with his child, but I will read what was shared about him. "Mr. White is quite possibly the best art teacher in the entire world. His amazing character and accepting attitude brought me a lot of hope and joy when I first moved here, which was in a time I needed it most. He inspired me to continue to be artistic and always pushes all of his students to be the best version of themselves. He deserves to be nominated because he doesn't get nearly as much recognition as he should for how amazing he is and how many lives he has changed for the better." So we thank Mr. White. And we also have a surprise one this evening, so if Mr. Messer could come up. We have a Power of One for Mr. Messer as well. If you don't know, Mr. Messer has served as the Chief Financial Officer for Chatham County for the past 12-plus years. He has held leadership positions in professional organizations, don't get close to me because I'm gonna cry, including two terms as the President of North Carolina Association of School Business Officials and President of the Southeastern Association of School Business Officials, overseeing 12 states. Mr. Messer holds a Bachelor of Science in Accounting and Master's of Science in Accounting from East Carolina. He's also earned the SFO Certified Administrator of School Finance and Operations Certification from the Association of School Business Officials. And notably, that is one of only two North Carolina finance officers with that certification. Throughout his career, he has received professional recognition, including the 2024 Lou Thompson Award from the North Carolina Association of School Business Officials. He's been recognized at state, national, and international levels for his work in school district financial operations. But most importantly, during his time in Chatham, he has assisted with impactful decisions and budget adjustments that resulted in increased pay for staff, supplement increases, free breakfast and lunch for all students, unified stipend structures, curriculum adoptions, new positions, and more. Mr. Messer is always willing to come to the table to problem solve and to work through any district needs. His goal is always to get to more yeses than no's, and he always focuses on doing what is right by our students. He's also a good fiscal steward and makes ethical decisions, speaking up when he sees something that is not in alignment with district policy or goals. As a result, as you heard earlier, the district has received the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence for the 13th year. Mr. Messer would probably say, "This is a result of a strong team, and the teamwork makes the dream work." But we know that a great team also starts with a great leader. Mr. Messer, we are honored to present you with the esteemed Power of One Award in Chatham County Schools for the month of October, and we fully expect to see this in your new office. I'm gonna fact check to make sure it's there, and we thank you for your years of service, friendship, and leadership that you provided to the district.
As I previously stated, it's been such a wonderful experience to be a part of the Chatham County Schools team. Didn't know where it was gonna lead 13 years ago, but my family and I decided to move here and build a house here, and this is where I'll stay is in Chatham County, so. Thank you.
Tony.
Yes, sir.
Let's end this on a fun fact.
Okay.
And it's a math question. How many baseball cards do you have?
Approximately 2.4 million. That's a fact.
You thinking about, Dr. Jackson?
No, but I, okay. And if I may, after.
No problem. Yeah. We'll move to our next segment. And, Mr. Messer, thank you again. We're, many of us have been fortunate to serve with you on here, so thank you for all your, your good work. Thank you. We'll move to the public comments section. You'll do it right here at the podium. You have three minutes, and of course, you know, when you signed up, there's a long list of rules there particularly. And I'll hold you to time. We've got 10 tonight, so we try to hold to 30, but we'll try to hold you to your three minutes, if you will. And first up, and to move things along, I'll let the next person know that they're, they're next also. Dennis Streets, please. And Duncan Merle is next.
Thank you. Frankly, I can't believe I'm here tonight defending the arts in our library books when my attention needs to be directed to assisting my older brothers and others devastated by Hurricane Helene. But here I am. As the proud father of two sons who attended Chatham County Schools and who were enriched by the excellence of a diverse curriculum. After earning graduate degrees from prestigious schools, they're now successful in their respective careers. And I'm here tonight as the spouse of a former Chatham teacher who enjoyed the respect of students, parents, and fellow teachers as she provided classroom and extracurricular activities to build life skills for our multicultural world and to empower and to inspire learning. And I'm also here as a longtime Chatham resident and taxpayer since 1972, who values the beauty, inclusiveness, and positive spirit of our community where the contributions of our Arts Council, libraries, and other vital institutions can thrive. Frankly, I'm very tired of narrow-mindedness and extremists who try through deceit, ignorance, and bigotry to undermine our public schools and move us backward. As 19th-century English author Robert Wilmot succinctly posited, quote, "Education is the apprenticeship of life." So, let's continue to help our children grow, mature, pursue wisdom and understanding, and learn to respect and value what Hubert Humphrey called, "In America, all the richer, for the many different and distinctive strands of which it is woven." Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, Duncan Merle, and next up is David Christ.
Greetings to the Board. My name is Duncan Merle. I'm the parent of two daughters who have attended and graduated from schools in both Silers City and Pittsboro. I'm a former teacher and coach at Chatham Central and a former cross-country coach at Seaforth. And I'm currently president of the Northwood PTA. I'm here today to thank you for supporting CTE programs throughout our district and in particular agricultural programs. Agriculture is still at the heart of what Chatham County is, both in economic fact and in its identity. And your continuing support of the agriculture programs is training a new generation of agriculture professionals to take our county into the future of agriculture. These programs flourish in all of the high schools here in Chatham and have been essential in forming young women and men for success on the farm, in agricultural marketing and technology, in college, especially at NC State, in the sciences, and in veterinary science. Even today, you have a group of students in Ag CTE showing sheep, cattle, goats, and swine at the Carolina Classic Livestock Show in Winston-Salem. There, they join with many of the 36,000 FFA members statewide, a 56% increase since 2021. Agricultural education is on the rise, widely seen as a multidisciplinary field, yielding the training and knowledge to be leaders in everything having to do with how America eats. My own daughter, my youngest, has been the beneficiary of your support of agriculture in our schools. Almost by accident, as a sophomore in Northwood, she enrolled in animal science, and it changed her life. She is now president of the Northwood FFA. She shows sheep, and she has eagerly decided that she wants to study animal science in college before going on to veterinary school. Had Chatham County Schools not supported agriculture in our schools, she might never have encountered it as something she could do, and she would never have been taught and pointed down a path that has changed her life. I thought you'd like to hear about something that is really flourishing with your support. On behalf of all our Ag students countywide, I invite you to come see what they're doing here at school and soon at the North Carolina State Fair. And speaking of life-changing education at the heart of our Chatham identity, how many of you are here to support the work of the Chatham Arts Council?
Good to see you. Good to see you.
Thank you.
David Christ, right?
Good evening. David Christ. Yes, sir.
Yes, and my apologies, I got the long eye there. And Mike Wiley is on deck there, please.
Used to fill, I assure you, with that name. My name's David Christ. I am not a longtime resident of Chatham County. I've been here for eight years. I moved from Lee County after serving in the military for 24 years. Three wars spent abroad fighting against foreign enemies. I come back to our community, and I was taken by the beauty that is Chatham County and the arts community in Chatham County. And I moved myself from Lee up here so that I could embrace this community in full. During that ride, I met people at the Chatham Arts Council and became a part of the Artisan Residents Program and donated to that program because I could see the benefits that it brings. As a child that was brought up in an underprivileged family, struggling to get a meal on the table, the only outlet I had was an arts program in the performing arts high school that I attended. It allowed me to reach out from the confines of my small life and imagine something bigger. 35 years later, all the experiences I had came down to five minutes on a stage in middle school where I had an opportunity to show the world what I was capable of doing, which was making a fool of myself in front of all of my friends. When I witnessed the children in attendance at the Artisan Residents Program, I have never been taken as far back at seeing the unabashed joy of these children to have an opportunity to participate in a program to which they are not accustomed and to watch them blossom as they join the presenters on the stage and participated and grow in support of the arts. We could speak for hours. We know that there is voluminous academic studies that back up that children who participate in the arts are better academically prepared to succeed. We know it gives them confidence, independence, problem-solving, social skills, critical thinking, hand-eye coordination, but most importantly, the thing that is in demand, self-esteem. They need it. They require it. The arts gives it, and to take that away from them would be a tragedy. Thank you for your support.
Mike Wiley and David Brunnen on deck there. Go ahead, Mr. Wiley.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Mike Wiley, and I am a teaching artist here in Chatham County. I've been in the Chatham County Schools a number of times, many times, over the, the last dozen or so years. I have two sons that are in Chatham County Schools at Northwood and at George Moses Horton. So I ask you, I ask the room, really, if you are a dreamer, come in. If you are a dreamer, a hopper, a liar, a wisher, a prayer, a magic bean buyer, if you are a pretender, come sit by my fire, for we have some flax golden tails to spin. Come in. Come in. Now, I want you to imagine a world where Shel Silverstein's open invitation to dream has been lost, or stolen, or silenced, or censored, or simply only extends to the affluent. Let's wander further into this Neverland of lost hopes and gray dreams, this world without art. Let's peer around the corner of that clean brick wall free of messy murals or impressions, or impressionists, or graffiti. And look at your faces. You don't like it here. You don't like this world without art. Well, neither do I. Let's go home. Let's go home. A mass exodus for the door. Except here is the devilish detail. Here is the spoiler alert. Here is home for millions of children around the country. Here is home for thousands in North Carolina living without a Chatham Arts. Except here's the thing. As Sondheim so aptly slipped into the score a West Side Story, there's a place for us. Somewhere a place for us. Here in Chatham County is Chatham Arts. And all of the arts teachers, all of the theater teachers, all of the ELA teachers, there's a place for us. The arts take phones and gadgets out of students' hands and replace them with paintbrushes and cameras. Takes kids off the streets and gives them a brand-new beat to walk and talk to that does not end at the courthouse. So if you believe in the arts and all that the arts can do, continue to support the artists and Chatham Arts Council. Thank you.
David Brunnen and Julie Wicker on deck there, please.
Mike Wiley, why do I have to follow you? Yeah, I love you. I love you that much more for it. My name is David Zumbrunnen, and I speak on behalf of my collaborator and spouse, Serena Epphardt, and myself. We speak as residents of Chatham County for over 30 years. We speak as parents who have a grown child, who now, as a grown child, proudly mentions his Chatham County upbringing every chance he gets. We speak as a pair of those highly courted and great commodities, county taxpayers, and likely voters. We are also local performing artists and producers who work here and beyond, and we are so pleased to be here along with our fellow artists and stand with our fellow artist, Mike Wiley, our friend and collaborator. And we also stand with another one of our fellow artists and friends, Pierce Freeland, who is also part of the programming this year, among many others. On behalf of Serena and myself and our entire performing arts and creative team, I want to thank each and every one of our school board members who are before me now, presently serving, the many prior board members we've come to know over the years. And I want to thank the wonderful Chatham County school system, our superintendent, the staff and administration. And in particular, I want to take this opportunity to thank the faculty and staff at each and every school in this county whom we have come to know over the years. We thank you for this. The opportunity to be one of the original artists who were at the start of the Artist in Schools residency here in this county, which I think began over 20-some years ago, I believe. As collaborators with the schools, we have been afforded the privilege of witnessing countless discoveries, and sometimes, yes, miracles, if you. countless discoveries, and sometimes, yes, miracles, if you will. Of students seeing their lives, their hometowns, from Goldston to Pittsburgh, from Moncur to Bonley, to see in new ways their fellow citizens and their worlds revealed to them in new and transformative ways, all through artistic and creative expression, if you'll indulge me. We've seen a young man who was deemed a functioning mute speak for the first time at Virginia Cross Elementary over that way during an assembly for the entire school. His fellow classmates, the entire school, and teachers, and his family nearly fell out. And I speak the truth. We've witnessed elementary students meet face-to-face groundbreaking community leaders in a discussion about the Civil War in the county courthouse in the circle some miles east of here. We've been a part of students directly researching and understanding the county's role in the Revolutionary War. We've had students interview local farmers to understand their role in our everyday lives and local economy. We've seen students understand how weather affects our crops and our livelihoods. I could go on. But it's all been through these literal examples made possible through artistic and creative expression, all through your work and efforts, and through the school system's work with the Chatham Arts Council's Artisan Schools Program right in this county. We are grateful to you for allowing that to continue to happen. Thank you.
And let's see, Julie Ricker and Johnny Shaw, I believe, on deck, yeah.
Good evening. I'm Julie Ricker, and I'm Chatham County School's parent volunteer and regular school board meeting attendee, and I want to continue my list of things I'm grateful for about Chatham County schools. Tonight, I want to start by thanking you for your investment in the arts. As the eloquent student speaker from C4th said last month, arts programs are a lifeline for so many of our students. Having quality band, chorus, theater, and visual arts programs in our schools means more joy, energy, purpose, and learning within our students' days. Thank you also for your partnership with Chatham Arts Council to ensure that students throughout the county get to learn from professional artists and experience live performances. The Chatham Arts Council's Artisan Schools Initiative is a gift to our community, giving students a window into other cultures and perspectives and alternative paths through which they can learn. I have witnessed our students unlock the power of poetry with Philip Shabazz. I have seen Jackie Robinson come to life through Mike Wiley. I have seen students express themselves through movement with the Black Box Dance Theater. I read the list of scheduled visiting artists every year and would celebrate the chance for my children to work with any of them. How fortunate we are to have a local arts council and community supporters who provide the funding to bring these talented and diverse artists from a variety of disciplines into our schools, and how fortunate we are to have a school board and district leaders who recognize the value of such programming and support its implementation. I want to thank you also tonight for your support of libraries and librarians within our schools. Knowing that there are districts across our state who have eliminated librarian positions or cut library funding, I am grateful that each of our schools has a fully trained and licensed media specialist. These professionals help our students access rich and engaging texts and become more savvy consumers of media who are able to spot propaganda, distinguish fact from opinion, and verify the credibility of their sources so they don't fall victim to the abundance of misinformation readily available around us. Our media specialists ensure that libraries contain books that represent the varied background and experiences of students across Chatham County, and they play a big role in helping our children find a love of reading. I appreciate the ways librarians and teachers incorporate high-quality literature in the curriculum so that worlds are expanded through shared reading experiences. Access to books helps students grow in knowledge and develop empathy and understanding through perspective-taking. Our librarian at Perry Harrison draws students in with programs like Take a Book Tuesday and One School, One Book, and I'm sure librarians across the Chatham are doing similar kinds of meaningful programs to support our students. Thank you for your support of them.
Let's see, Johnny Shaw and Garnet Persinger.
All right, I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to me. Johnny Shaw, 35 years retired, school employee. I know most of you, I've worked with a lot of you, some of you were in my class when I was teaching, and, uh...
Young people.
...a lot of you are still working over here. But anyway, getting to the crux of the matter, while I was working with Chatham County schools, I got to witness firsthand the value of art and having a strong art program, having a library that all students could use, and be successful. And I don't think you can put a value on student success. There is no value. It's our goal, it's the number-one goal of every school employee is to have successful students. And it's a pleasure for me to see some of my successful students right now. And, uh, thank you for your time, and I know that you in the past have supported the arts program and a strong library system, and I'm sure you will in the future. Thank you for your time.
Garnet Persinger and Amanda Ochs.
Thank you. I'm inspired by these speakers before me, and it's one of the reasons that I'm here. As a lifelong educator, I hear the results from Chatham County schools. I'm not from Chatham County, but I've been here for 18 years, and I'm very proud of what you're doing. But I'm also very concerned about what is happening in relation to the public schools in our state and in our nation, but where the lack of support and, as a matter of fact, the attacks have taken our schools to, the support for our schools to the bottom in the heap of states, and proposals which would take away, for example, the Title I program for about 99,000 students in North Carolina and 6,400 teachers among all of those. Public schools are vital, we know, not only for individual development, even freedom of every person, but also it is the value for the democracy which depends on the engagement of educated, informed people. And in today's world, when we're experiencing the lies, the redefinition of liberty and freedom, and the advocating for some at the expense of others, it's very difficult, and I know how difficult it has to be for those in the public schools to meet the challenges not only of the reduced resources, but also of the harassment and the challenging environment. So I rise to applaud you, the Board of Education, and the personnel, the staff, the faculty members in our schools, for, in spite of all of this that you are doing with the strategic plan, which is excellent, with the adjustments and the assessments that go with that, and the creative projects, the arts is one, but the continued engagement with stakeholders. And so I also rise to encourage you, in this time, to know that there are those of us who are supporting what you are doing, and we want to continue that support. And I would encourage on two particular levels that sometimes are easy to overlook in the basics when you're looking at reduction of resources. One is the professional development of the faculty and the staff and the leaders, which is so important to maintain in a changing global society, the importance of an excellent leadership and faculty. And the second is the continued communication, both internal and external, so that the skills that are needed not only for the persons who are the faculty and staff, but also for the students. And so keep us informed of how we can continue to support. Thank you very much.
Amanda Ochs and Bell Boggs.
Good evening. I am certainly not a public speaker, but this is too important for our family and our community not to make note of it. Earlier today, we had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Jackson and Dr. Moran in a productive discussion for which we are grateful for their time. Therefore, I now want to raise some concerns to you, the board members. We have been trying to decide how to put into words our frustration and disappointment with the Artisan Residency coming to Bonley, provided by the Chatham Arts Council. The choice in Black Space, their own words on their own website, "We offer black and brown youth, astronauts, a breathing space to manifest their dreams. At Black Space, we gather community through digital and arts-based woke shops, African-centered events, and rituals, and by producing creative storytelling projects. At Black Space, we harness dark energy to nurture the black hole." This is completely disheartening for the Bonley community. Upon researching the website for Black Space, we did not understand why this was chosen to be brought in. What do we need dark energy for in our schools? Why do we need an organization that puts on woke shops, speaking to fifth graders, for eight days? If their focus is on astronauts, black and brown youth, as their website states, what does this have to do with or provide the rest of the students in the name of arts education? From what we have read, the group's material is extremely divisive. There are so many varied artists in this area, talented artists, that could teach our children so much more about the arts. It's not the content we have a problem with, but the force-feeding of this program's ideals. We are not trying to delete the Arts and Residency Program. We appreciate what it brings to our community, or what it could bring to our community, if this choice was reconsidered. We have no room for dark energy in our classrooms. Why is the Board of Education allowing this type of agenda in our schools? Why are we holding eight days' worth of workshops at Bonley, but other schools only miss one to four days of instructional time? Instructional time is priceless, we are being told, yet our children's education is being put on hold for beat-making labs. Why does Bonley lose 720 minutes over eight days of instructional time while every other school in the county participates, only loses four days? We have received a form from Dr. Moran clarifying information and ensuring that the contents of the presentation are consistent with our expectations and aligned with our instructional standards. We have been given the opportunity to opt our child out of the Artisan Residency Program. What does that do to my child's mental state? How can a group that promotes and produces dark energy have anything to offer our children to make them shine, our buzzword for this school year? Let's all appreciate the arts, but with the same accountability to promote one Chatham. Thank you.
And last, Ms. Bell Boggs, please.
Good evening. Thank you all for the good work that you do on behalf of our students and our community. I want to echo something longtime board member and educator David Hamm said the other night at the NAACP Candidate Forum.
Uh-oh.
Like David, I am very proud of our Chatham County school system, school board, county commissioners, and educators. I'm proud that our district has decided to fund free lunches for all students, a just decision that helps all students across the county. I'm proud that you all decided to support paying our teachers higher supplements, which also helps all of our children across the county. Because of our legislature's decision to defund our public schools, talk about dark energy, there's a lot of unfairness in our state, but I'm grateful that my children are growing up in a school district that believes fully in their right to a good public education. I want to, I have everything written down, but I kind of want to correct some things about how Artisan Residency programs work. They are, I mean, I think many of us know that here because there are a lot of teaching artists here, but they work in collaboration with teachers, with the state curriculum, and with the school principals and staff to make sure that the work is tailored to the community. And if you have a chance to see them in action, as Julie Ricker was saying, it's amazing and a really powerful experience. The Chatham Arts Council, in partnership with the North Carolina Arts Council, fully funds Artisan Residency experiences at every school, I'm sorry, in schools across the county. Their ambitious goal is to provide residency experiences at every school in the county every year. I think that is wonderful. These week-long residencies come at no cost to the school, are aligned with state standards, and are unforgettable immersive educational experiences for the students and the teachers. And there are lots of things I would also like to mention that we take eight days for, such as at our old school, we had a Booster-Thon that took at least eight days away from instructional time to try to raise funds that the legislature wasn't giving us, and we've changed that, and we're doing a DIY fundraiser now. Anyway, my mother was a teaching artist, and before I became a college professor, I was a classroom teacher who benefited from these visits, as well as a teaching artist for the Arts Council of North Carolina. My belief in this work runs deep. So many children, especially in rural areas, never have an opportunity to see a play or a concert or meet an author, but through the work of teaching artists like Mike Wiley, Pierce Freelon, and the Flamenco Vivo Dance Company, students not only get to experience world-class performances, but also to learn from talented, practicing artists. The kids that we educate today through this program might be the Grammy winners, Poets' Laureate, and Broadway stars of tomorrow, so thank you, please continue to support them.
Dr. Jackson, you said you wanted to reserve something, are you?
Yes, sir, it's now.
That's fine.
I want to start by saying that I arrived in Chatham County four years ago. And the only commitment I made at that time was that I would be a champion for teachers, for children, and for our community. And so I want to start tonight by just saying that public schools are, in fact, the background of our community. They are where our children learn, they grow, and prepare for their futures. Yet instead of celebrating these spaces for the opportunities they provide, political agendas are increasingly pulling our schools and teachers away from their true mission. Since the pandemic, many politically motivated groups have injected themselves into schools, not to improve education, but to create controversy and sow division. For them, schools are battlegrounds for political points, not places of learning. Moreover, our teachers, professionals who dedicate their lives to nurturing the next generation, find themselves caught in the crossfires. This must stop. Our teachers have trained and prepared for their careers, only to see every decision they make questioned, challenged, and even undermined. This is unfortunate. We don't have to look far to find countless stories affirming the immeasurable power of a good teacher. Experiences matter. Opportunities matter. Teachers are the connectors of these two essential ingredients. We must do everything we can to support and protect them from outside attacks and influences. Schools have always recognized the rights of parents to be involved in their children's education. Every educator knows that nothing meaningful happens without the engagement of parents. But teachers deserve the same benefit of the doubt. If they come to work every day, excuse me, they come to work every day to educate, inspire, and enrich their students' lives. If we want to retain great teachers in our classrooms, we must give them the respect they deserve. Teachers should not have to fear politically motivated attacks simply for doing their jobs. They are possibly, excuse me, they are responsible for one of the most critical roles in our society, teaching, mentoring, and shaping our children's futures. They deserve our trust, not suspicion, and they need workplaces free from hostility. No school teacher, excuse me, no school, no teacher or parent is perfect. But here in Chatham County, we are fortunate to have strong schools, committed teachers, and a community that values education. Yes, mistakes happen. We are human, but we should address them constructively together. Criticism and blame do not do nothing but tear down trust, stall progress, and create fear that stifles growth. fear that stifles growth. Our schools are not just buildings. They lay the foundation for our children's futures. When political agendas take over, it is the students who suffer. Classrooms must remain places of learning, not political stages. If we allow teaching to be derailed by political drama, our children will pay the price. Our students, our schools, and our teachers deserve better, and our community must demand better. We cannot let politically motivated groups turn our classrooms into battlegrounds. Instead, we must unite parents, teachers, and leaders to protect our schools as places of growth, opportunity, and learning for all students. Political agendas have no place in our schools. We must focus on collaboration, not division. We need to listen to our teachers, value their expertise, and provide the support they need to continue their vital work. As a community, we must reject attempts to undermine our schools for political gain. The voices that should lead the conversation are those who genuinely care about public education, parents, teachers, and students. Schools shape our children's futures, and we must protect them from outside interference. Chatham County, we can do better. Together, we can rise above the noise, keep politics out of our classrooms, and ensure every child receives the education they deserve. Public schools are, and will always be, the backbone of our community. Our teachers deserve better. I will do whatever I can to ensure that they get it from me. I need you to do the same. Thank you.
Let's just take a five-minute recess, all right? Let's just do that, and then we'll come back and get into the boring part of our meeting. Now, we'll get into, we'll get into business work then. Mr. Drummond is ready, ready to tell us all these things back here, so we're good. Yeah, let's take five minutes. Oh, man. I'm glad I don't have to follow you. That's why I took the time before.
Say hello.
I saw you out there doing real work.
Where's that?
On your porch, sweeping or something.
Do it all.
David Zombroni, he's not only briefly, he passed on a few times this night. Here's to your remission.
Well, I was thinking, I was going to say, no, 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 I was the first or fourth speaker of the year. Our four, I was the only student, so I had to take my class with our three, and I had to take my three to his independent school. Because nobody, you know, I was in second grade. I was the second graduary class.
No, 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 no. No, it's weird that you said it, because I think, I think what we, we can cover this many times, and it's been twenty, forty years, we've been in a career. And his words were so, and we've learned to take care of him. And thank you.
I saw the stuff, but like.
We thought that there were going to be like a whole bunch of, that lady that got up and talked about Bonley.
Yeah, I saw her.
There was supposed to be a whole bunch of them coming in, that's why.
So I gavel Mr. Wa, Mr. Hamm on there. We're ready.
But I guess they decided not to show up. Which is a good thing.
Don't like to show their face.
Mr. Hamm, we're ready if you are. Carly, Carly, you're welcome on that. Okay, we'll move to information items, North Carolina School Board Association Board Policy Manual Updates, eight thousand, nine thousand series, and I believe you're supposed to have some help up there too, aren't you, Dr. Moran? I had Mr. Blythe and Mr. Messer on there too, so they're going, oh, there he comes, okay. So go ahead.
As you know, our district is working with the School Boards Association to conduct an audit of our full policy manual, and we bring each month a new segment of policies to be reviewed or approved. This particular item aligns with each of our strategic plan priority areas, since our policies cover pretty much everything we do in the district. This policy update specifically has twenty-six policies for review. This is the eight thousand and nine thousand series, and those are typically, most, most all of these policies are fiscal and facility-related. These two series of policies are also pretty small in comparison to the ones we've had to bring to you previously, so that's why we combined them in one meeting. Some of these policies require minor changes with slight wording shifts, some have larger revisions based off of legal updates. Some of the policies in this series have already been updated, so in your chart, you'll see those marked in green. That means we've already approved those in prior meetings, and they're at the current School Boards Association recommendation. The correction, the correlation chart shows each policy that was reviewed and its current status. If the item is in green, again, it shows that it's up to date. If it's yellow, it is something that is not included in the School Boards Association Policy Manual. In our instance for this evening, there are six items that are policies that are unique to Chatham, meaning no other district has that, and it's not a part of the School Boards Association manual. We're recommending for those policies to be repealed, because they are covered in other policies that are already in our policy manual. The items in orange, at the recommendation of the School Boards Association, are to be held for a later date, and the reason for that is it might be a policy that there's a particular legal reference that's going to be updated soon, so they want us to wait until they have the newest version of that. And let's see here, items are in white are the ones that we are recommending for approval, and you can see in the notations any of the specific changes. Most of these policies are revision of result of Leandro case obligations or other general legal updates and references. So not many of these have any major shifts that are not just a part of kind of the legal update. The one policy that we're holding is the Federal Grant Administration, and again, that was at their recommendation. Let me see. And I think that's all of the notes that I needed to share, but if you have any specific questions about any of these, we have our folks here ready to answer if you have any.
Anyone have any questions after looking over them?
No.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Blythe. I just didn't want you leaving mad because you didn't get to talk. Item B, Northwood High School, Philadelphia, band trip, and you're still up, Dr. Moran.
So this is in alignment with Priority One, Curriculum and Innovation, and while the school trips do not require board approval at this level, we did feel like this was one we wanted to bring to your attention. The Northwood High School Band has been invited to participate in a Fourth of July Parade in Philadelphia from July 2nd through July 5th, 2025. The Wawa Welcome America is Philadelphia's premier July 4th festival in America. They were found because the sponsor of the parade wanted to have bands representing North High Schools from across the country, and they did a search in North Carolina, and Northwood caught their attention. So that's how our Northwood team was invited for this trip. We did want to share it with you, because it is an overnight trip as well as an out-of-state trip. The band director would like to take this trip with fifty-two students, eleven chaperones. One of those chaperones would be our band director, as well as one school administrator. Due to the nature of July 4th being a very historical time of year, as well as a historical city, we also wanted to put some additional safety precautions in place. So we have been in communication with the organizers of the parade and the local police department. They've informed us about security measures in place. Homeland Security is working to secure the parade route, so there are barricades, they have horse patrols, they have folks about every, I think it was twenty-five feet, there will be officers in the parade route. We will also take some additional measures if we approve this trip, so that we will have some additional addendums to the field trip, letting families know about different safety protocols that they would want to make sure their students were aware of. We would also have a safety meeting with families and students prior to this trip, making sure that everyone knows what the expectations would be. We do feel like this could be an important opportunity for many of our students, and we will plan accordingly with the safety measures in place.
And warn them how hot Philadelphia could be in, on the Fourth of July too, since it gets warm, but yeah, I think that's wonderful. Anybody have any questions?
Shouldn't a board member be required to go? Gary?
Well, actually, my wife grew up about forty minutes kind of north of here, but now wins, wins several baseball games there anyway, but yeah, I think that's a wonderful trip. Anybody have any questions, comments? That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to action, let's see, action items, Chatham Early College, Dr. Battin, Academic Calendar Revision.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Speaking of calendars, it is National School Principals Month.
Is that why they all came tonight?
We're all here.
That's why they're all here, okay. Thank y'all, thank y'all so much for being here for that.
Hey, surprise!
Well, Dr. Battin, when I saw them all walk out, I thought, I leaned to Dr. Jackson, I said, is this mutiny?
Right. School calendar, so it's always important with school calendar that we remind ourselves there are two state requirements at work. One is the instructional hours requirement for students, and the second are employment date requirements for staff, so those two things. Chatham Early College, as a comprehensive innovative high school, has calendar flexibility for instructional hours, so the time missed for Tropical Storm Debbie in August, we were closed August 8th and 9th. There is not a requirement for student hour makeup, however, there is no calendar flexibility for employment dates for staff. As a result, we're recommending two days, teacher workdays added to the conclusion of the Chatham Early College calendar, which will be at the end of May.
I move the Chatham County Board of Education to approve the Chatham Early College 2024-2025 Academic Calendar Revision as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions, discussion? All in favor, whether I?
Aye.
And the opposed, like sign. Thank you. And I think this X item might be why our principals are here, let's see. Item B, 2024-2025 School Improvement Plans, Dr. Moran.
So this particular item aligns with each of our five priority areas in our strategic plan, and as you may recall, all North Carolina schools are required to submit a school improvement plan to the local Board of Education for review and approval by state regulations. A part of that as well, the local Board of Education has to review the safety components of the plan during closed session, which we did earlier this evening. Just a little bit of information. Just a little bit of information about any financial impact related to school improvement plans. The cost of each school's plan is really different based off of the needs of the individual school. And schools will use their instructional supply funds, PTA funds, Title I funds, et cetera, to be able to support the action items in their plans. We have included in your packet a link to the school improvement timeline, if you can pull that up real quickly. It just gives you an outline of the steps and the resources that our schools use in this process. These school improvement plans are really different than what, back in my day as a principal, we used. Those were kind of these plans that were in a binder and you put it on a shelf and it collected a lot of dust. These plans are really living, breathing documents, so schools are expected to meet on these monthly, um, and they're supposed to update biweekly, um, status of their goals and their various strategies. This is a research-based process, um, that is done by a team in the school. Also, on each school's website, in the main menu, there is a link called School Information, and under that, you will see School Improvement Plans. There, the public, parents, community members can log on with a, um, ID code that is listed on the website there, and you can see any of the school's improvement plans at any given time you would like to see them. So what's posted tonight is a static view, but to see the live view, you can log on at any time and see the progress that a school might be making. Um, Ms. Carrie Little, our Executive Director for Federal Programs, is going to share a little bit more with you about the research-based tools that we use and a little bit more about the process.
Good evening, um, the tool that we use, and I'll thank you guys for coming today, um, is NC Star. Uh, you will see it online as Indistar, but this actually holds their comprehensive needs assessment. Uh, we use the FAM, which is used through MTSS. So each team at the school, their school leadership team, which consists of their principal, an AP representative, an instructional assistant representative, instructional support representatives, teacher representatives, and parents of children in the school representatives. So they all look through their school improvement data and they determine in alignment with our strategic plan what their goals will be for the coming year. And so every school, as you can imagine, is going to be different. But those teams decide what their goals will be and create their plans within NC Star. And as Dr. Moran mentioned, they, you're gonna see the, the static view, but it is an ongoing process as school improvement should be. Do you have any questions about that?
Anyone? It's a lot of work, thank y'all very much for doing that. Do I have a motion? Uh-oh, Mr. Ham has something.
This is always a test every year, and Carla Murray can attest to it and all. So, Ms. Beck, I would, could you, you name, could you name the people on your school improvement team? I'm just joking, no, I stopped. Years ago, Carla became a principal and I said, Carla, on page 39, Item C, can you just elaborate a little bit more? Her eyes got about this big, like, what? And I'm just joking, no, y'all do a ton of work. It's, it's, uh, thank you for your leadership and, and, and the work and, and, and getting your teams behind you. That's, that's, that's a big chunk right there, so, uh, um, I'll echo Gary and.
That's even though our board member got one of our new principals and put her on the spot first thing in the morning. We apologize for that, we're, we're wanting you to stay, not leave, okay? So, so we'll, we'll get away from that. Do I have, well, let me just go ahead and make the motion. Move the Chatham County Board of Education approve the 2024-2025 School Improvement Plans as presented.
Second.
Second.
Got a, got a couple of seconds, actually. Uh, any questions? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, like sign? And I believe our principals have had a busy day, so if y'all want to take off, thank y'all very much, thank you for all you're doing. We appreciate it very much. Item C, um, donation to Seaforth High School, Dr. Moran.
So this item is in alignment with Priority One, Curriculum and Innovation, as well as Priority Five, um, Communication and Information Sharing. Um, Board Policy requires that any donations or gifts for schools, um, beyond $5,000 do require board approval. Um, and so we do have a generous gift from one of our community members to Seaforth High School. And Dr. Burton, our Executive Director for Secondary Programs, will come and share with you a little bit more about how this donation will be utilized to support our CTE programs.
Good evening. A local dentist's office, orthodontics and dental facial orthopedics, has decided to, um, donate gently used 3D printers to Seaforth. Um, as you know, we use CT, we use 3D printers in our CTE department. Um, we are not able to afford the type of 3D printers that this dental office wants to donate to us. Um, so teachers will be trained how to utilize these specific printers, and it'll be across all CTE pathways, not just in certain areas. Um, and we will incorporate them in as many CTE courses as we can. The printers were originally valued at $50,000 apiece. Um, they are now valued at about $15,000. But again, with the monies that we receive from all of the entities, we would never be able to purchase multiple 3D printers like this. So this is a wonderful opportunity and experience for our students and our teachers. Any questions?
I move that we accept the donation as presented.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, well, any questions, I'm sorry? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And we thank the dentist officer of whatever, and now you can go now. You're, you're good to go, Dr. St. Clair, thanks for hanging around. Item D, student fees, Dr. Moran, you're on a roll up here, and I'll tell you.
So, um, this item is aligned with Priority One, Curriculum and Innovation, as well as Priority Three, Facilities and Infrastructure. Policy 4600, student fees, was amended in June of 2024, so we just revised it. Um, and this policy now has a requirement that the Board of Education approve all student fees by October 15th of each year. And this is in, um, North Carolina legal statute as well. In addition, these fees must be posted on school district websites. Um, the list that we have that we can pull up for you is a list that was developed by each of our school principals to share the current fees at each school. We do have a stance in our policy that students should not have to pay for required courses or assessments. We do cover the expenses of community college courses, NCVPS courses, as well as needed textbooks for these courses. This document also includes the current fundraisers that each school conducts annually. Um, it's also in our policy manual that we would share with the board any fundraising efforts annually. That doesn't have to be approved, um, but it is in policy to share it with the board each year. So each one of our schools put this together. We also do have, um, instructional funds and other funds, um, at-risk funds to cover costs for assessments, community college courses, et cetera. Um, and some of our schools also use PTA funds and Title I funds to do additional programming in the schools. Um, each school filled this out for their school, um, and we have shared with them that any shifts or changes that would need to be made for any new, um, fees or any new fundraisers would need to come, um, before us. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this particular list.
I do have a question, because I know that we do a lot, and especially with PTA support and Chatham Education Foundation, others, to help, uh, students that are lower income be able to afford. But do we keep track, or is it even issued children that can't participate because they don't have the money to do these things?
So our policy does stipulate that students cannot, um, be held out of a course or a field trip because they have a financial hardship. So, um, principals do have to post the student fees for families and they have to have a process by which families can request supports or hardship funds. Um, and if the school doesn't have means to cover that, the district can chip in where that might become necessary. Um, so most of our schools, and I, I don't know of any instance where that has occurred, but we, we've stressed with our principals that students have to be afforded these opportunities.
Thank you, I think it's good for the listening public to hear that, so thank you for that.
But I also know we have some organizations that donate money specifically for students that need help particularly, and that, that's social worker and, and principal and whatever, they take care of that too, so that, that helps in the process, so. Um, any other questions?
Question? It, it's serious, okay? I, I can't be serious every now and then. The whole plan, line by line, is, is pretty uniform, but one thing stuck out, and the reason it stuck out is because I had a granddaddy last year call me and, um, had a frank discussion, I'll just put it that way. Um, the parking fees are different at all three schools and kind of drastic. Um, it's set by the principal, but I'm thinking with everything else in that plan, you know, uniform, you know, picture fundraisers and, you know, whatnot, uh, pretty uniform. What's the rationale be, behind that not being a uniform price?
I don't know that I can answer that. I don't know if Dr. Burton is still here.
I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to create a deer in headlights, but, but if I hadn't had that frank conversation with that granddaddy.
Yeah, that's, um.
Um, you know, um, and he brought up a good point, and.
We, you know, we can take a look at that, and if, if, if it's the will of the board to have it standardized, um, because some of it may have to do with, um, demand.
Man.
Um, but then.
That's part of it, yeah.
But we can, we'll, 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 we'll look into that.
I mean, it's just, it just seems that, again, eyeballing the campuses, uh, early college ain't gonna have that problem, so are the three high schools, that, um, I don't see that there, that there's a s, lack of space, especially now that Northwood's half of what it used to be. So.
We'll check into it.
Okay, I, it's just, I just thought.
I don't know how those numbers were, um, I've prom, some of it is probably historical too, but we'll.
As, as, speaking to somebody that used to handle that at John Central years and years and years ago, it was in conjunction with our, our administration and, um.
But, you know, in all fairness, it would be, if, Chatham Central would love to charge what Seaforth charges.
True they would.
Now, they may not get the money, but, you know.
Oh, I'd probably had, if, if I was in charge, they'd probably throw rocks at me too, so yeah, if they were, but anyway. I move Chatham County Board of Education approve the 2024-2025 Student Fees as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, like sign? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, proposed 2026-20 through 2032 CIP projects, Mr. Blythe, Mr. Drumheller, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Jackson, uh, this aligns with the facilities part of our strategic plan. Uh, the CIP, uh, budget or plan is submitted each year to the county commissioners, uh, for their consideration and review. We're in fact, we're meeting, I believe, tomorrow with, uh, county staff to go over what you're seeing tonight. Uh, and what we're asking you to do tonight is to approve the starting point for this. Where these end up with the years and those types of things is out of our hands, but this is what we, we need your approval to bring. The document down at the bottom of this, and if you'll scroll down, Jimmy, and open that, the attachment down there. Excuse me, you're there already, I apologize. So the first three pages of this is what is currently in place in the CIP. This first page is future projects, if you'll scroll down. Second and third page is the approved scheduled, uh, CIP projects that are in place. Uh, and just scroll down again, you can see what those are.
And while you're at that, am I cor, am I correct in, it looks like according to ORED figures, we've done some changing around as far as start times and whatever, yeah. Okay, okay.
So, uh, Mr. Schlag, if you'll go down to page four, and this is what we're proposing, that we're gonna share with the, uh, with the county manager's office tomorrow. Uh, the, the projects that are still in the black font are unchanged. These are the future projects, they're unscheduled at this point. Scroll down, you'll see down at the bottom of this, there's two new projects there in the red. First is security renovations at all of our schools and.
Said Dr. Wilson costed us money already, isn't it?
Yes, sir, well put. And then the second piece is land acquisition for future schools. And these are two future projects, we're gonna be talking them about tomorrow. Down below that, you can see on the approved scheduled projects, you'll see some little places that are in red where dates have changed. And what Mr. Leonard said a minute ago, you can see that there on the Margaret Pollard Expansion. We've changed the fiscal year there to a year later, uh, and we did that because ORED projections right now say that we don't need to move forward with that other sixth classroom pod at this point. It's a sizable investment, so we'd rather wait till we need it and be able to use it appropriately. Down at the bottom of this, you'll see two projects, if you go a little further, see two projects that we've added in. I'm sorry, go back up just a little bit there, there you go. So the roofing replacement repairs, uh, those of you who've been on the board for a while, you'll remember that several years ago, we had a very long-term roofing project that went for, gosh, probably about, about 10 years. Yeah, it was quite a substantial project. Uh, and we touched on, uh, roofs that needed repairs, roofs that need replacing. The, we're at the point now, though, some of the roofs at that point that we were able to repair now need to be replaced, and other roofs need repair. Uh, so we're going back to revisit this, and that's a project that we are going to be asking them to put in as a funded project. We're working through some of the final information, which we'll be talking with them about tomorrow. The other is a roof replacement at Siler City Elementary, and we felt like that one, uh, had some immediacy to it. So we're gonna be asking them to go ahead and approve that, and let's get that budgeted so we can move forward. Mr. Drumheller, anything?
No, I think you covered it.
Question for you, go ahead, David, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On Siler City roof, is that, is that a redesign to get rid of the flat? Because, because a lot of people don't understand that school has a flat roof in all the different pods, because the way the metal sides are angled.
Sure.
And is that a feasible, or is that just too cost prohibitive?
Cost prohibitive.
Okay.
That's sure good.
Okay, yeah.
Those are maintained.
Yeah.
And I've walked on it.
That's why we're having trouble with it right now, yeah.
It survived me walking on it.
We did a, and, and, well, it's directed by, we did, or y'all did a site survey everywhere. How long has it been since that was done?
So, uh, Mr. Chair, we did that in 2014.
Okay.
Um, right now, I have, uh, I've got an assessment, uh, going on right now for MEP portion of that. I don't think the architectural and the building portions are gonna change. So that assessment will be coming.
Which will tell us some of the issues or whatever that we're looking for.
So tell them what MEP is, you just.
Yeah.
Okay.
2014, we did everything, buildings, door knobbers.
Okay, so this is, I got you.
This is just mechanical, electrical.
Okay.
And that'll help us with some of these projects that we have proposed, so that we can move them forward.
More of a technical question now, and I guess the answer would be yes, but with flat roofs, well, any roof, but with flat roofs, it, the process, the material, is it better, or is it still pretty much the same?
I don't wanna say it's better, I mean, you know, a flat roof is, uh, two ply bit modified and a metal roof is metal. They both have.
I mean, the material they use now, is it, is it a new space age, you know, better quality, whatever?
They do the two ply bit modified, which is a black roof, force them on roofs such as Pollard.
Okay.
So they'll do that, and then there'll be a gravel covering on it.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
I move that the Chatham County Board of Education approve the proposed 2026 to 2032 capital improvement plan.
Second, got a motion and a second, any other questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, thank you, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Very much. Um, let's see, Center for Community Connection Memorandum for, or Memorandum of Understanding, Ms. Fowler, please.
Good evening, Mr. Leonard, members of the board, Dr. Jackson. I'm Tracy Fowler, Senior Executive Director, Student Services. I'm bringing you a memorandum of understanding for Center for Community Connection. This aligns with our strategic plan, um, for the area of student health and safety. Um, the Center for Community Connection is a newer nonprofit in Chatham County. They're gonna be operating out. They're going to be operating out of the farm on Penny Lane, which is part of the University of North Carolina Excellence of Community Mental Health. And they are offering their, all of their programs they're going to be doing are off of philanthropic dollars, so there's no charge to us. And they want to partner with us, and particularly with One Academy, to provide some workshops and just mental health support, and also offer it to other students. This is really an opportunity for kids to kind of be out in nature. There'll be some cooking classes, some arts classes, kind of more of a holistic approach, and they would be working with families as well. So just kind of another piece of a layer of supports that we have for our students. So that's that particular MOU.
More help. That's wonderful.
And this is part of Penny Lane, which is affiliated with UNC. And is there research involved with this, or...?
So there is a research, well, a component. Actually, the founder, he is an occupational therapist. So a lot of this is kind of coming from an occupational therapist model. So he works at Duke University. So there are going to be doctoral students from Duke University doing some work with the program as well.
And you mean the founder of Penny Lane?
No, the founder of the Center for...
Of the nonprofit, yeah. Got you.
That part over there.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? I move the Chatham County Board of Education to approve the Center for Community Connection Memorandum of Understanding as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Y'all don't start speaking up, I'm going to have Jimmy put that big up motion up there so that, so that we get some more help here. Item G, let's see, Piedmont Health Memorandum of Understanding, Ms. Fowler, again.
And this also aligns with our student health and safety piece of our strategic plan. This is actually specific to dental health. Piedmont Health, we have two clinics, one in Moncture and one in Siler City. They are wanting to serve our students through their dental van that would be available to come to the school sites. What we've realized is that even though they do have the clinics, they still have students that are not able to receive dental services because of lack of transportation, or their families are not able to get to the dental clinics within the time because of their parents working. So if parents, if their children have, the parents have requests for them to come out, or we do referrals, they would be able to come. They would be able to do screenings and just basic dental cleaning, x-rays, and any kind of other work that would need to be done. So this is actually a really exciting opportunity. We've worked on this for a while. So I'm pretty excited that we're going to be able to offer this kind of services if you all approve this memorandum. So very exciting opportunity.
And of course, for that, this is an opt-out, opt-in, I guess.
This would be parents requesting...
Same thing as it's always been when they came and checked the dental work and things like that, yeah.
Yeah. I move that the Chatham County Board of Education approve the Piedmont Health Memorandum of Understanding for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? Think it's wonderful. Thank y'all.
That's great.
All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign? Thank you.
Just a general question, because we do, what, 15 of these MOUs? Can we do more than just one year at a time?
We have some that are...
One year at a time. Some of these are new, and we're bringing them to you. And then typically, when it, if it's a renewal and no changes, they go on consent. But some of them are multi-year, some of them are year-to-year, depending on the age and the organization. Some you don't want to have more than a year. If they're new relationships, we want to establish those and make sure everything goes according to what we want to do. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Item H, revised Chatham County Schools Board of Education Meeting Calendar. Dr. Jackson?
Yes. Mr. Chair, we are asking that we move our November meeting for scheduling purposes to Thursday, November 7th, instead of Tuesday, so that there's no conflict with Election Day and...
Instead of Monday, right?
Yes, Monday, I'm sorry.
Election Day's the next...
Election Day the next day. We were just trying to move that to Thursday of that week due to some scheduling conflicts, as well as it being that particular season. With your approval, I think everyone's schedule was amenable to that. Thank you.
I move that the Chatham County Board of Education approve the revised Chatham County School Board of Education Meeting Calendar as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay. Item 2020, item I. 2024 NS North Carolina School Board Association Voting Delegates for the Chatham County Board of Education. And the documents, I think, have it. And Julie, if it's okay with you, you're listed as an alternate. And all that means is it's a new process this year. We have to vote on it. And if one of us has an issue, you're going to be there and you can vote. You know, it's not a problem. We've just got everybody listed. So I would make that a motion that we approve that for the School Board Association yearly meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Next Board of Education meeting is Thursday, November 7th, 2024, at 5:30 p.m. Thank y'all very much. We appreciate y'all's attendance. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You'll kill your mic.